Stand with us for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tara, will you call the roll, please?
Anthony Moranty?
Here.
Kim Connor?
Here.
Dennis Gagnon?
Here.
David Hardy?
Here.
Peter Lewis?
Here.
Neil Tolman?
Here.
Neil Zuckerman?
Minutes from September 21 meeting. Anyone have corrections, additions, deletions? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome to the Phillips Town Planning Board meeting of October 19th. First item on the agenda is the return of escrow. Alaska LLC Lady Blue Devils Lane, Colespringe. Just returning escrow. Any comments, Ron? Do we have any information on money's owed or anything?
Yeah, the project has not been active for a long while. There's no outstanding monies.
Okay.
Do we know if they finished the landscaping in the back?
That I don't know.
We can send a question to the building inspector. Does he have to have a final check on landscaping, code enforcement?
I have not been involved in the project in so long, I can't recall.
Okay. I'll check with him tomorrow.
Why don't you approve the subjective information of that?
Yeah, yeah.
And then just touch base with Greg and see if he's actually doing landscaping. If he hasn't, you hold it. If he has, you return it.
Okay. Entertain a motion to return escrow for Alaska?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
It's on condition that...
On the condition that he's finished landscaping?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Barbara Peck Eiler, Lake Celeste Drive, Albany Post Road. Proposed construction of new single-family residence and driveway with attached garage. Access approval needed. Just a moment here.
My name is James Clearwater. Good evening. My name is James Clearwater. I'm a land surveyor with MJS Engineering. I'm here with Ben, the applicant's local rep. And Mrs. Eiler purchased this property a year ago. It's a 19-acre site at the end of Lake Celeste Drive. She's proposing to build one single-family house on the site. It's a vacant site, it's always been vacant. It has no frontage on a public street, never has had any. It's always had its access through the, at the end of Lake Celeste. So I guess the first item that we want to address or need to get looked at is the ODA issue or provision in the code with building another house on a private road. There's already 14 houses on that road, which obviously is more than what the code currently permits. So, but it is an existing lot, it's been existing for generations. And so, that's it.
Is it a buildable lot? Ron, any comments?
Again, you've got a technical review from my office. As the applicant indicates, it's on a private road, it's a landlocked parcel. He's applied to the building department for a billing permit and the building inspector has referred him to the board pursuant to the year regulations under the land subdivision regs. So it's a matter for you to consider approval of the access that he requires off that private road. It's a process you've been through before with other applicants. We've got some technical issues to deal with, but I think the primary issue you want to accomplish tonight is to consider scheduling a site inspection.
Right.
So you can evaluate the issues of the existing private road as well as the access intended into the parcel.
And you're more than welcome to. I'm sure Ben will give you a tour up there whenever you... Together or separately, or however you want to do it.
Yeah, well, Kim?
So I have a question. In the pre-op meeting notes from August 8th, it says that the authority of the building inspector to issue permits for parcels deriving access from any such right-of-way easement shall be limited to such number when added to the number of principal structures, blah, 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 shall not exceed eight on a right-of-way easement existing before August 5th, 1960. And as you said before, there are already 14 houses on this road. So it would seem that the ODA forecloses adding any more houses to that road.
Well, no. They can, as of right, assuming that the road meets construction standards, go build as long as there are eight or less. If it exceeds eight, then you take a look at the road and you can say, you can't build on it unless this, that, and the other thing are done. So this gives you a right to say, no, you can't, whereas if it was less than eight, you would not have that right. All you could look at was construction.
So then our process is to go and have a look and decide whether or not they might have to improve this road in order to add another house?
That's exactly right. I mean, there's kind of a presumption that, you know, the access of the ODA road to a public road, if you have traffic backing up too much, could be dangerous. There's a presumption that these roads are not as wide or as well-built as town roads would be, and therefore if you have too many houses on them, you put too much traffic on them, you're going to cause problems. But that's not necessarily the case, it's just kind of what you look into. It could very well be that the ODA road can support 14, 20, more houses on it. But you've got to go out and take a look, and you want your engineer to take a look at the road, and then you make a decision.
So when we, then the limiting factor here for us going forward, because we talk about ODA roads a lot, and we talk about how, you know, you can have four lots or, you know, elbows, shoulders, and then you get six lots, right? So that would be after August 5th, 1960?
There's two timeframes. One of them, and I think it's the older roads, I always get these backwards. The older roads, you can have, I think it's eight or more, and if it's a newer road, you can only have four or more. But it's written in the code, I forget which...
Construction is four.
Pardon?
I think the new construction limitation is probably four.
That's what I said, yeah, that's what I think. And I think the older ones...
And older limitations were eight.
Isn't that what I just said?
So we're either, we're either in arithmetic or geometric relationship. You still want...
I said, we're either in an arithmetic or geometric relationship to the two requirements, depending on whether you choose four or eight to go to 15. But the existing road, just, you know, full candor and matter of fact, is passable, it's narrow, it's bounded by stone walls, much of which are probably of the erection of the existing tenants. I mean, the lot...
Owners or owners?
You know, owners, whatever.
Okay.
Inhabitants, whatever, yeah. Owners, inhabitants of the existing dwellings. Many of those dwellings are in need of, or are going to be in need of significant attention in the next period. So I think it's a concern, you know, an overall concern. Most of them are bungalows built in, you know, late 1950s, typical hollow block construction, very light. And it's property values and other development takes place, inevitable, you know, upgrade of those houses is going to be required. There's an easement crossing two lots, and the road is really not bad until you hit those easements. So the assumption that I've put on the buyer and my client, Barbara, is to expect to have to make some improvements through the easement to her property where things get kind of bumpy and unkept. And the assumption would be that the existing road in would be, you know, tight but adequate. We did, Jim's partner, Michael, came out and we took a look at the physical engineering. There's a little, there's a, you know, covert slash small bridge. We looked at that, that's plenty strong in terms of weight. We looked at the road to make sure we could bring whatever in and out of there without worry, and I feel that we can. And the road's not particularly any worse than Indian Brook Road or, you know, a lot of other roads back in all there. It's, you know, comparable, I would say.
Any more questions from the board at this time?
What's the grade look on the road?
The grade on Lake Celeste is fine, I mean, it's virtually flat, until you get up to the end and then where it enters Barbara Eiler's site, then it becomes a little bit more grade to it. But Lake Celeste Road is, as you know, is a private road, which comes in off of Old Albany Post Road, which is a dirt road, town road. So, I mean, Lake Celeste Road is, in places, is better than Albany Post Road. But you can look at it when you collapse.
It's less subject to erosion in Albany Post or Indian Brook, you know, in the same vicinity because it's flatter. So, yeah, we assume once you get, once you get past as a cul-de-sac at the end.
Sorry. Once you get past at the end as a cul-de-sac, and assume beyond that, we have to do some work, no doubt.
We will probably be considered part and parcel of the site plan application on this. I don't think that the board's going to separate them, I mean, they'll decide everything at once.
Yeah. I mean, the sort of baseline position is that the lot was created at the same time as all the existing lots. So the fact that the house is physically being constructed later, it's part of...
Pure knowledge, how many other buildable lots are there on this road?
This would be the last one.
Last one?
Yeah.
How many acres?
It's 19, 19-plus acres, and we're putting a 2,500 square foot house and a garage. I mean, not, be very modest occupancy for, use would be for a single person.
If it comes off that turnaround at the end of...
You go beyond the turnaround, if you're familiar, and then there's a little jag over toward what would be Broverman's property. And that road, it's actually asphalt, but it's very, hasn't been surfaced in 50 years, it looks like to me. And you go by their property and you turn up, and then it levels out, and it's really quite pastoral. I mean, it's a very beautiful property.
Steve, on this letter from Greg Warner, code enforcement officer, obviously he's asking that we set it, determine it as a major site plan, but he's also saying approval of access. Is that...
It's the ODA. The way it works is you go to the building inspector in the first instance for your ODA approval, and if you either have more houses on the road than are allowed under the code, or if there's some issue that he can't determine that the ODA road should be approved, he wants more expertise, you refer it to the planning board, then the planning board hears and determines the ODA application.
Any more questions from the board? Kim?
Yeah, so somewhere in here, it mentions that it's in the state historic preservation something or other, SHIPO. There's a mention of SHIPO. So I'm just wondering what that, that it's adjacent to, it's in your EAF. And it says that it's adjacent to property that, or that it is or is adjacent to property that has the state historic preservation, I don't know what the "O" stands for. I don't know where that is in here.
The only relevance to that, I mean, it's never been, it's never been built on, it's always been vacant for no doubt centuries. There are white oaks there that are, you know, 20 inches in diameter, so the only material impact of that that I would understand would be to preserve the stone walls, of which there are many. And that's the intent, anyway.
Here's the question, sorry that I didn't have it before. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? And you've marked that yes. So just...
I didn't mark it yes, the DEC marked it yes. When you, when you fill out the form, yeah, I know. When you fill out the form online, the DEC automatically checks off things.
So it would be helpful to us to know what that is?
Yeah, we'd have to address the DEC to get that answer. Of course, most of the county is in an archaeological sensitive area because the Indians were here. But I will address the DEC to get, order you off, or SHIPO, to get a answer for it.
Yeah, Barbara and I have discussed that, actually. In fact, we were talking about inviting one of the local colleges down to look around if they're interested in anything. It hasn't been inhabited for evidently hundreds of years, so it's possible, you know, anything's possible on the land. There's no evidence of existing structures or...
We just need to know what, you know, what it is since it's marked yes.
Yeah.
Also, on page six of this, saying, it says, will the proposed action disturb more than one acre and create stormwater runoff, blah, et cetera? And you've marked that as no. So you have .83 acres of disturbance on your notes on your plan here, and also .5 in terms of roads. So that seems to me that that adds up to more than an acre.
No, the .5 is included in the .83.
Okay, that wasn't clear.
Plus, you're, the road itself is an old timber road, so there's really pretty minimal, minimal disturbance to most of that road is some areas. And we were listing the entirety of it, but it, the actual amount of work on that road, you could drive your Subaru up there right now without a problem.
Okay. And the length of it from Old Albany Post to the terminus, approximately?
I'd have to scale it off.
I mean, 1,400 feet, 2,000 feet?
I don't know, it's not that long.
1,000 feet?
The property's 1,000, the property in one direction is about 1,000 and then less. I think it's like 1,000 by eight or nine.
I'm just trying to get a picture of the length of the road, the access road.
I'm sorry, which road?
The access road that we're talking about leads to, with the four...
Before you get to the... Lake Celeste.
Two-fifths of a mile, something like that.
Yeah, less than, maybe half mile.
All right, that's good enough. I just wanted to get an eye. We'll go down and see it. Any else, Kim?
Anybody else? I think that's it for me for now.
No one else? Are we ready to determine as a major project? Anyone?
Sure. I'll make the motion to declare it a major project.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we need to refer to Town Conservation Board, and I'm assuming it's Continental Village Fire Department? Is it in there?
I'm not sure which it is.
Well, we'll have to determine whether it's Garrison or Continental Village, and notify them. So I need a motion for courtesy referral to Conservation Board and the pertinent fire department, whether it's Garrison or Continental Village, motion to that effect? Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tara, dates for possible site visit?
The earliest you could do is the 5th, unless anybody has an issue with the 5th, then it would have to be the 12th.
Any bigger problem with November 5th?
I can't come on the 5th, but, you know, if everybody else can, then, you know, we'll deal.
What time of day?
Sunday morning at 9:30. They're all, I'm telling you, that's when we do them. Right, Glenn?
Certainly.
See?
I'll go to the...
Okay, it's two.
So can we do it the following Sunday?
Yeah, well, yeah, the 12th, tennis?
Maybe up in Canada, so...
Oh, shoot, goodness.
Yeah, I don't hold it for me, so maybe I'll walk the same.
No, okay, we have, what we need is, you know, whoever shows up.
Kim, is the 12th open or is it 5th?
5th is better for me, because now, I mean, I can do the 12th. 5th is better.
Yeah, well...
So what?
Anybody else have a problem with the 12th?
The 12th?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Sunday at 9:30. Oh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're not ready for a public hearing, scheduling a public hearing.
I don't think so. You want to see what you got?
Is there anything else, Steve, Ron?
SECA, you're going to want to declare this an unlisted action.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to want to do an uncoordinated review.
I need a motion to declare this unlisted action of the SECA.
We should declare, whatever.
Unlisted? Motion to declare an unlisted action.
Thank you.
Unlisted action.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we will see you November 12th. Anything else?
We have to declare a solicitude agency.
What?
We have to declare a solicitude agency.
That's the unlisted action case.
Yeah.
If you do it, it's only one responsible agency, there's no need to... If you were doing coordinated, then you would do the lead agency circulation. It might be a type, I don't think it is, but depending on what we find out from SHIPO, it might be a type-one action. I really don't think so.
No.
And if it is, then we have to do a coordinated review, but I don't know if there's any other involved agencies, so...
No.
I think you're fine, I really do.
Okay.
1,000 feet from Old Albany, Andy. Just checking.
You've got a question here.
Yes.
Did the board entertain any discussion concerning this...
Not at this time.
Whether you take...
At the public hearing, when we sit to public hearing?
Just wanted to know that there will be stuff.
Oh, fine. That's why we have a public hearing.
Also, the site visits are public?
Yes.
So...
I'm glad you mentioned it.
People who are interested.
Bring your friend.
You can come to the site, it's just like a meeting here, it's the same, a public meeting.
And if you'd like to submit written comments before the public hearing, the board will entertain them.
Between now and then, yes, they'll be into the record.
All right. So you want to talk about the reelection of the road?
Okay. Hold business. That's what that bunch is all here for, right? Folks? Folks, please.
The Buck application for site plan approval for 1653 Route 9D was before you. You referred it to the zoning board because we didn't, we had a garage that was too big. We've gotten that variance. So, and you've conducted your site inspection. You got a memo from Mr. Gaynor yesterday. I believe that I read in there that we're ready for a public hearing, and I think the only business to conduct tonight is to schedule a public hearing. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So there was one, I just wanted to ask Ron to refresh our memory about what our obligations are regarding the scenic protection overlay district and the open space conservation overlay district. Like, what are the things that we're supposed to be looking for?
Yeah, the scenic protection overlay ordinance just mandates the protection of vegetation along the frontage. There's certain criteria that you don't remove vegetation within the first 100 feet. You also don't want major structures to be visible from the, from publicly viewable spaces along the frontage. The board's been to the property, I think you understand the parcel. I don't know that the board has identified any views into that site in areas that he's proposing to develop or provide additions, but that's a decision that you'll have to make. In terms of the open space, it really relates to subdivision of property and requirements as to minimum lot sizes.
And are there restrictions on what can be viewed from the river? I thought that that was a thing as well.
That could be deemed, you know, publicly visible space or viewable space. Again, I, maybe Glenn can identify the improvements that are planned to the structure. We all know where the structure is on the property. The major addition of the garage is going to be on the Route 9D side of the existing structure. I don't know that that won't create any visibility from publicly viewable space. The, there's additions proposed to the, to the north of the structure. Glenn, if you could help me out to just explain...
The existing structure is here, a little south, south, the center north of the property, about 400 feet from the nearest property line, I believe. Well, that's probably not true. It's 400 feet from the nearest adjacent improvement. The core of the original building is, remains standing. Some of the additions have been taken off. There's a new addition, there's going to be a glass walkway to a new addition that's going to roll over and down the hill away from there, towards, towards Foundry Brook, still well within the property. There's an existing driveway that's going to be rerouted to that point. There's an existing driveway off 9D which is going to be rerouted again. So well, well within there. I walked the property in this area today, up into the northern part of the property towards 9D, walked back through there with the architect, the landscape architect, and the electrician, trying to figure out how we could get the wires in without denuding the property or finding a route that was going to minimize it.
To that point, you're not talking about putting them underground, are they?
Yeah.
Oh, they are.
They're going to come across the street to a new pole, go down, and then go underground all the way in. So I don't think there's any possibility at any time of the year that there would be any visual impact.
Now, the applicant did make commitments to that home office in terms of how that construction would be accomplished.
That he would not be clear-cutting below that, and that we would maintain those, the trees on the slope and selectively cupping, cutting a couple of places where he could get a peek at the river and...
And they also talked about a long overhang to minimize any kind of glass glare.
That's correct, I'd forgotten that.
And darkened glass or some kind of shaded glass?
Right.
Okay.
He committed to the long overhang, I remember that. I don't remember about the glass, but we could certainly have non-reflective glass. I'm sure that's something he would, he would do.
I don't remember the original plan having two driveways. I thought we, there was just going to be one, and you were removing one.
I think he's closing one down, yeah.
Yeah.
No.
No, he's just relocated.
Relocating, no, it was always, always two on there.
He's going to maintain two.
He's relocating, he's got to relocate the one driveway.
He's separating the one driveway that you drove in, which services the property that's still...
Okay, right, that's right.
And was there any further look at preserving a few of those trees that, since there were so many very large trees along the...
Oh, there's a, the answer is yes. They, in fact, I specifically went out there, we're flagging trees that are going to be located and specifically preserved. There are going to be a number of trees that are, do come out, especially in this area where the pool and the poolhouse are going. This whole area here, there is going to be one tree trimmed to get the wires across the road, and this whole area is going to stay. This, then, this provides screening for all of 9D. Immediately behind it, there's an open field, tall ryegrass kind of stuff that's right in here. This area down here is also not wooded, it's also open. There's wood that separates these two, except I think it wraps around a little bit. This is all wooded. This is all open along with views, and those views are going to be preserved.
And then new addition is not, is lower than the existing tower, right?
I believe it is. I'm not, I know that it's going down, the living space is going down over the hill, and I don't believe the top is any higher than what's, I think it's not as high as what's already there. I'm sure it's not as high, but I don't know that it's not going to come up a little bit at where it joins in. I, we'll have, we'll have...
Prior to the public hearing?
We'll have elevations.
Prior to the public hearing, you should file architecture... Part of the public hearing, you should file architecturals so the board understands all the improvements planned between the garage, the additions, the home office, just so some illustration is available for the board to look at.
We, we'll certainly do that and hope you take the time to look at them.
Anything from anyone else? Anything from anyone else? I guess we go ahead and schedule a public hearing, Ron?
Yeah, I think that's the next step.
For next month, and I'll entertain that motion.
Could I ask one?
Yeah, sure.
So, all of the, all of Ron's technical comments that he makes on this will be addressed in the packet that we'll receive before the public hearing?
Probably not. We, normally, there's things that are just, that, that we settle afterward where you say it's okay for Ron, but we are, we will-
But the ones that-
The major ones will be addressed, the minor ones will not be addressed, and that's typically of what, typical of what we do.
Right.
Okay. Okay, Peter? The motion?
I just have one question. I forgot, like, what was the approval of the variance that they approved, what was that for?
The garage that is being proposed is about 1,200 feet bigger than is allowed. There's a limitation of 1,000 feet on the garage, and they want about 2,200 feet, I believe it was. We got that variance. One of the things is that that garage is going, except for the doors, that garage is gonna be underground and under a green roof, and that was one of the selling points, obviously, on the-
Okay. Now, a motion to schedule a public hearing for next month? Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, may sound facetious, but since I don't have so much room in my little office at home, the three prior notebooks, is this-
I think you need to keep one in the office-
I want a simply conservation file, the initial studies and stuff, I see that they're all in here also.
There are three versions of, of the environmental assessment form. The first two are now-
Moved?
Yeah, they're superseded, yes, thank you. There is much in the conservation analysis that is not attached to that. The conserva, if you read in the, in the text, you'll see that we make reference to it and we refer to it by, by reference, but the more important elements that had, bore some significant discussion, we would take out certain parts of the report and put it in the back as an attachment, so you didn't have to dig through the conservation easement.
Okay.
Uh, conservation analysis, excuse me.
Thank you.
We received a, a note from Ron Gainer, our planner, that, they only just recently received this, did not have time to review the full EIF, EIF, EAF, sorry, and, Ron, any comments?
As you indicate, the, the applicant filed a more thorough environmental assessment form and now has some revisions to part two that the board had requested, and also contains significant detail in terms of a part three elaboration on the variety of the potential impacts that you expressed concern about, that you wanted to see further detail on. I've been in contact with AKRF this week, and they're, they and my office are, are now actively reviewing it, but we obviously didn't have an opportunity to conclude that review for tonight's meeting, so, we'll, we'll get our technical comments out to the board in advance of your next meeting.
Steve, any?
No, I, I think that's a fair summary. We'll hear from Ron and AKRF for the next meeting and hopefully in advance of it, and then we'll take up the whole issue of completing SECA review at that time.
Okay. Any comments from the boards? Okay. Briefly? Briefly.
Michelle Smith, Hudson Hines Land Trust, we submitted a letter on October 5th. I just wanted to make sure that you received it, it's a four-page letter. It did not make the materials for this meeting that are online, so I just wanted to check if the, the planning board received that letter.
Received and distributed.
Yes, that's it. Yeah, and so the four-
And we received it in the package before the meeting.
Oh, you did get it in the package, so it just wasn't in the, is it possible to request that it go in the package on the website so that others can see it as well? And the, the four issues we addressed in that were requesting a public hearing before the SECA determination, continuing concerns about fragmentation of land versus what the code calls for in the conservation subdivision, equestrian facility, and, and calling for full environmental impact statement if the plans stay as they are for all of those reasons. So, thank you.
Okay. Glenn, any last comment?
I've got a couple of comments. First of all, we're, we're a little disappointed that we didn't get something this month. I mean, Ron didn't get it until the beginning of the week, I don't think, I don't think AKRF got it until about two days ago. There was a considerable amount of work that went into the preparation of this, on a, on a very tight deadline. Had we known that was a problem, we would have hand-delivered it, and I will take some of the blame for not just taking that, but I was away. I wasn't gonna say anything, but there's another letter there that we should have been copied on that letter, we haven't gotten it. They didn't have any obligation to send it. And my final comment is that you've been taking a long time and a very detailed look at this and follow the law every step of the way. One of the things that you've deviated from your normal practice is having a public hearing before you've closed SECA. And I just, if you're gonna follow the rules, follow the rules.
Glenn, we always hold a public hearing before we make our SECA determination. It's been the board's practice as long as I've been here.
I understand that, and I underst, but, but the rule, the, the way the SECA law works is you're not supposed to have the public hearing until after you've made a determination.
Well, no, the SECA regulations don't say that at all, actually. There's one second department case that says that, and whether that's, you know, binding or not, it's open to interpretation.
Okay, just seems like we're getting, you know, you know, we, we move, I'll be perfectly frank, we've, we've done everything we've con, we possibly could for everyone here, short of just erasing the lots and going away, and we're, we're getting frustrated by it.
Is there any way to circulate the code provisions? Steve, let's read the, let's read the rule, make sure we're doing the right thing.
Do we want to read the SECA regulations?
Yes, sir.
Um, I can point you to where they are online.
I was gonna say, they're on, yeah, they're online.
Give us, give us the code and let's read it.
Sure, sure, no, go ahead.
See what it says.
Well, it leads out, I'll circulate, you can, you can read it, six NYCRR.
The only comment I would make is, this is the first, and maybe the only kind of this development in Phillips Town, you know, thinking of the land and the topographies, topography and so forth. There was another project that was the one and only of its kind right next door, and that took five or six years to complete. I think we're being absolutely thorough here, 'cause it's a sensitive area, it's a large area.
I'm not faulting, you're taking, I'm not, isn't, not a hint of fault, and you're taking your time and doing it correctly. And we've been very responsive in, in every possible way we could, we can be, and continue We just need to move this along, and it's, I'm sorry, but I, I have to fault being, having your consultants get, get the package two days before your meeting when you impose a two-week deadline on us. I know it was a snafu, I know that, but I'm-
Okay, point taken. Any comments? Anything additional from the board? Any? Okay, so we'll jump on this next month.
I would hope to have a full review of this. I don't expect we'll conclude it next month.
No.
I expect we'll have a full review of it, I expect there'll be comments and criticisms that we have to address, and I'm fully prepared to do that, but I would like to get there.
To be honest with you, I'd like to get there, too. What are you talking about, two, two and a half years? I definitely, I can say my office is filling up, but, okay, ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.